February third, two thousand twenty-two. Would you call it over?
Councilwoman Apple.
Here.
Councilwoman Apple.
Here.
Councilwoman Eagle.
Here.
Councilwoman Peters.
Here.
Councilwoman Peggy.
Here.
Assistant Mary.
Here.
City Attorney Molly.
Here.
Uh, there's two items that you wanted to just discuss among you. Uh, so the first of those is the peddler's permit. Uh, so this is just an open discussion, however you would like to do this. Probably you'd be able to raise your hands for everybody not talking at the same time, but, um, yes, sir.
I like the motion that we adopt, um, this ordinance on ordinance number four. Uh, that basically just takes out the twenty dollar fee, so keeps an application in there, um, but doesn't, uh, doesn't charge a fee, basically.
Second.
Okay, one second. Any discussion on that?
Um, just so you all can see, Danielle printed these out for you. But if you go to the, uh, front page up here, the fourth page, nine dash four, the top right, it just takes out that number two down there, which is the permit fee. It just takes that out, basically. And everything else stays the same.
So you, so you would eliminate section two and then all the others would be moved up?
Everything would be moved up, yes ma'am.
Okay. Uh, the only thing that I talked about is the form would have to be changed from this, but it's two meetings. So if you pass them first and then the second meeting, the second meeting would apply next time. And then the filling out would be different here. So the form would have to be, but, but as, as far as the content, any further discussion?
I'd like to suspend the rules so that we could, I'd make a motion that we, I know I can't make a motion, but I'd suspend the rules so that we could have, um, Mr. Bill Water to speak, if he'd like to speak.
To speak to this motion? Um, this is discussion on this motion from now.
It does.
I think it pertains to it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say.
Okay, yes, sir.
Um, first of all, I'm gonna say I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for this right here. It was my understanding that, that a workshop, we don't, we're not allowed to do
Well, we have
motions and whatnot.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
But
We, we, we need to talk, we have a regular agenda.
Yeah, I think it, I think it would probably be better, honestly, if y'all voted on this in the regular meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
But y'all can come together tonight to, to discuss, to, to get your thoughts together on maybe how you want to vote on it in the regulars.
Well, and it is an item on our agenda for the regular meeting, so.
It doesn't make that as many, I thought this was a
Uh, I just wanted it not to come back and bite us in the butt, let's be.
Well, I'm confused about the special call meeting versus workshop myself, so.
Yeah, I thought it was a call.
We need to clarify that.
Well, let me give you what MPAS told me. MPAS told me that we can have, you can have workshops, okay? Your, your, the city charter allow, it doesn't say anything about specifically y'all having workshops or not having workshops. And she said that it was fine for you to have workshops, we can call them whatever we wanna call them. Whatever you guys wanna call them, you can call them. It's just that you have to publish that you're gonna have a workshop, what you're gonna be talking about, and give this, give the public opportunity to come if the public would like to come. So I think any voting that you do probably doesn't need to be done at this forum, you probably need to wait till your regular meeting.
Right, that's a good point, Sam. So it, it is an item, it's item, item three on our regular, and that's business, so.
You go first.
You're right, Mrs. Lee.
Uh, so is this, have we established this is a workshop or a special call meeting?
Well, it, that's what he's saying, it's a workshop, but no matter what we do, it has to be open and, and the agenda has to be.
You can call it whatever you wanna call it, we can call it a workshop.
I mean, if it, if it's a special call meeting, we could probably do the, this and get it out of the way. I'm, I'm good either way, whatever.
It just, what I was told by Alicia, it has to take the same, if you're gonna do a workshop, it has to have the same formalities as a regular special call meeting.
It's a special call, no, I'm sorry, a special call meeting workshop.
Okay, so the way we did this, so we put this, just, just by ex, if you look at the agenda, we left this just as a discussion, so you could discuss it, because this is already an item on our regular meeting agenda. So if you want to discuss this, but let's wait for the actual vote, you, you're not to attend, Sam, and so we could actually vote to the regular meeting, yes?
Well, seems how it's labeled, a special call meeting and a workshop, that covers both areas. So we decide, we discuss it, we decide we should be able to vote on it.
No, no.
With a special call meeting.
All they can do is actually on the agenda, so we, we said we didn't wanna vote during this meeting, that's what's on here.
When did we say that?
You said it, we didn't.
With a workshop, that's what you were saying, you don't wanna.
It should've been labeled a workshop, it should've been labeled a special call meeting workshop, it should've been one or the other.
Do you wanna go ahead and vote on this? Go right ahead, I, I.
Bill wants to speak, let's have, let's let Bill speak. He's done a lot of work on this.
So Barbara had a motion to suspend the rules.
Just wanna rescind your motion, so she.
I'll rescind the motion.
Okay, so allowing us to speak, two thirds vote, is all in favor of us to what you've said.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, okay, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Okay, Bill, please.
Okay, um.
Please, try to keep it close to what we're talking about, if you don't mind.
Oh, well, it's absolutely dead on. Uh, I presume this is where I need to stand?
Yep.
Uh. I'm hoping that what I can do here is, uh, simplify things and maybe clarify some things. To give you a little background, I have talked to the Attorney General's office, I've talked to the comptroller's office, and I talked to the City of Lebanon's Business Tax Office, and, uh, I talked to the, uh, Wilson County Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, here is what I came up with now, I won't read you the synopsis here. What it basically boils down to is this, if you look in this handout that I gave you and you go to, uh, page nine dash six. The comptroller's opinion that was passed on to me and the Attorney General's opinion that was passed on to me is that this particular ordinance applies to peddlers, transient vendors, street barkers, and all those things that are listed there. It does not apply to peddlers, flea markets, or anything of that nature. And if you look at nine two oh five, this is the Lebanon, uh, Lebanon ordinances, which basically, all the cities that I've read, their ordinances are the same. They're pulled from the state of Tennessee's Vol. Lake, and they read the same, they may change the numbers around a little bit, but basically the same. And if you read nine oh, nine dash two oh five one, it says restrictions on public peddlers, be permitted to set up and operate a booth or stand on any street or sidewalk or in any other public area within the city. That's the restriction, okay? If you say this ordinance that the City of Carthage has, and Smithville, and McMenville, and name other, other hundreds of cities in the state of Tennessee, if you say this ordinance applies to festivals and flea markets and things of that nature, then every, every, uh, festival that we've had, uh, Market Fest, Walton Days, Hometown Christmas are illegal because of this, uh, uh.
Excuse me, just one second, you're looking at Lebanon's.
I am looking at Lebanon just now.
Now, we have ours.
Uh, uh, I'm trying to make a point.
Okay, but if you're nine four, you're on ours in Lebanon, it, it speaks to street barker, and that's what you're referring to, festivals.
Motion to let him speak.
Well, just to clarify, this is not our peddler's permit we're looking at here.
Can we just give this idea of what you think, with how to adopt to make our, our permit?
This is a workshop, and I thought you were supposed to mean to give solutions.
Just clarify that it's not ours you're talking about.
I am not talking about yours, I'm talking about Lebanon. And I, the reason I did this, you sent me an email, um, six months or eight months ago, and you listed, uh, Lebanon, Cookeville, Gallatin, and you were using them as backup for what you were trying to do with Peddler Smith. So that's why I went and looked at Lebanon, Lebanon is close to us. The ordinance, if you look at this ordinance, it's pulled from Tennessee Code Annotated, and all of them are the same with a few exceptions, okay? All right, if you look at two, nine two oh five dash one, it says that they're restricted. So what this means, according to everybody that I've talked to, that this means the ordinance does not apply to festivals, flea markets, et cetera. It does apply to private peddlers, vendors, transient vendors, and, and, uh, people like that, et cetera. So the mayor was wanting to protect the people of Carthage, uh, and that's what this does, yes, sir?
So, I mean, in all technicality, though, ours points out only peddlers, transit vendors, solicitors, and street barkers. It does not pertain, ours still does not pertain to festivals, um, or anything.
My point exactly.
So, I mean, technically, technically, anything that's been charged was illegal to charge if there was any fees charged on any of those. That is illegal, 'cause it's not covered under this.
And, and according, according to this Carthage City Ordinance, every festival we've had since the beginning of the adoption of this ordinance was illegal. But it's not illegal because this does not apply to festivals. That's why Smithville, uh, doesn't charge, uh, the people that are coming to the Peddler's Jamboree. That's why Lebanon, when they close the square down and do all of their festivities, they don't charge anybody a fee because this does not apply to that. And what it, what you can do.
Lefed, Gainesboro is also in that category.
Right, Gainesboro, and, and every other city in the state of Tennessee. I haven't called one that, uh, charges this permit to anybody that's festival.
Or permit?
Now, that's a little different.
Yeah.
You need to have a permit, and, and I, and I really agree with that. You need to have a permit because if you look at what Lebanon did here, which I think is really good, is, uh, if we can go to the section that, okay, if you go to page nine dash five, and again, this is Lebanon. What they have done is, if you, if you just flip real quick over to nine dash four, nine two oh two dash one, it's exemptions. That's what's exempted from this ordinance. What they did is they made a special exemption for vendors of Christmas trees, uh, garage sales. If you have somebody in the City of Carthage that wants to have a garage sale in their driveway, right now?
No, they don't have to have them.
That's illegal, according to your ordinance.
No, no, that's not.
But if you, uh, if you go on down, if you go on down through the, the provisions of this chapter does not apply to fee, flea markets, they exempted that. This chapter does not apply to sales conducted under authorized programs at the James Ward Center. You could insert city parks there, that would make Market Fest legal. Then, or during events sponsored or sanctioned by the City of Lebanon, you put City of Carthage there. And then what you do is, I come to you, uh, in Lebanon, the, uh, Wilson County Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Council to my knowledge, are the only ones that close the street down and do fairies. They are sanctioned to do that by the city because they are supported by the city, as you guys support the Chamber of Commerce. So when the Wilson County Chamber of Commerce comes to the city, they get a permit for whatever they're doing on the square there, like I would come to you, get a permit for whatever's going on on the square, and then you guys would give me permission to do that, then we would block the streets off and do our, uh, thing, and we, we are legal to do it. And you require me, uh, proof of insurance, like they do in Lebanon, with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Council. And then you don't have to worry about any of this because it's a san- sanctioned event by the city. And you don't have to change your ordinances that much because this ordinance from Lebanon is almost the same as the one that you have in Carthage here.
Excuse me, we have an agenda to take off this permit, please, so why, why, I mean, I appreciate you're doing this, but it's already on the agenda to take it off.
It, it's my, uh, i- if I may say, it's my thought that it would be dangerous to remove the fee. And here's, here's my thought. If you remove, remove the fee from the ordinances, then somebody could make the argument that selling chairs on the side of the street or they're doing something else that you want them to do a permit, they're, they put up a food truck or something like that, that they're not obligated to pay any kind of fee because you removed the fee from the ordinance. I think your ordinance can stay almost exactly the way it is, except you just add those exemptions to it, and you recognize that a festival and a flea market does not come under this ordinance. And it needs to be an event that we apply for a permit with the city, get your permission, and then you sanction it by that permit.
Um, and, and I just wanna kind of, I, I know one thing we're trying to do is, um, the concern you had was protecting our businesses, and I, and I understand that, and I understand that from her point of view, and, and I'll give you a perspective from a business point of view. More businesses in an area is more business. Now, it's a, it's a bigger pie, and it's a smaller piece of the pie, but you're making a bigger pie. And, um, anytime there's an event down there, it's been proven time and time again that every business, if it's downtown, even when it's over at Market Fest, it increases business, it increases revenue in businesses because there's more people, and people are looking for different experiences. They might be looking for experience at Business A, Business B, Business C. Um, so I think, uh, and, and I understand, I think it's a noble effort to try to protect our businesses, but, um, like, I like when there's a food truck around. I, I mean, for my business personally, 'cause I get more business, and it sounds, sounds like it wouldn't give you more business, but it really does, 'cause you have more restaurants in an area, more people tend to say, well, let's go down and check this out, you know? And they, they, you know, they might not, they might eat at that food truck, they might come eat, um, a dessert at my place, you know? Or go over to the candy bar and eat dessert. So that's that, the, the, the second thing is, is, like, I don't mind, I mean, I'm not gonna say I personally agree with having an application, but I don't mind having an application, don't put a fee on it, just put the, just put the application out there so we know, hey, a person A wants to share, sell rocking chairs. I've personally bought rocking chairs for person A, whoever sells them out there, I don't understand person every time or not. Um, it was kinda neat to see that out there. Um, now, do we want, like, all the time, things coming in, or it starts getting out of control? Well, that's why we have that permit application, be like, well, it's kinda getting to be chaos, and we can just kinda back them off a little bit. But I just don't see why, and I don't see it getting out of control, so we don't need to act like it is out of control, 'cause it's not. But let's, you know, let's kinda, let's just take the, I mean, it's not a lot of money, I, I'm sure we spent a lot more money going into all that, looking into all this than what it costs. And just get rid of the money, we can keep, keep pushing fees, it's kinda a good compromise, you know?
And just to clarify, I think I'm agreeing with you, I, I, I think it's good to have all of the street vision things we have. This particular ordinance is a state mandate that we didn't write, but the, the people who actually lobbied for this years ago, were, this is people who say, I don't want a truck going in front of my business and starting to sell on the back of this truck. We don't know who they are, if it's stolen goods, if they're competing with a price, so this, in fact, if you look at the application, it, it, a good application will say, where have you sold before? Is there a felony? It's, it's, requires your, um, your driver's license? So that we know whoever's selling is a legitimate, whatever's coming out there is legitimate, it's not stolen goods.
And I can't speak for all businesses, I can speak for maybe a few of them that I know, and a few that I work with. I mean, very, you know, yeah.
I, I'm not referring to the fee, I'm saying we have to have a permit.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not gonna argue against the permit, I'm, yeah.
We cannot not have a permit, that's a state law, but we can do it with a fee, and that's no problem.
I'll win the compromise.
One, one fear I have is, please, while you're sitting here, realize there is a worlds apart difference between a peddler like the mayor just described, or a vendor like the mayor just described, and a festival. They are two different things, and you need to let the city handle the festivals when we come to you and ask for a permit, and not reach into that festival. Nobody at Lebanon inside the festival pays any kind of fee to anybody but a booth fee. Nobody at the Smithville's Jamboree pays any kind of fee to anybody but the booth fee. The Jamboree Committee goes to the city, and they get their permit, and they're not charged anything, and they put on the festival. The Chamber of Commerce, Wilson County Chamber of Commerce, Lebanon City Chamber of Commerce, go to the city, they get their permit, they don't pay a fee of any kind, and the people that are inside that festival don't pay any fees other than their booth fee.
I think we're all in, excuse me, I think we're all in agreement about this. I mean, we can keep talking about this, but we're in agreement that, that the fee is not necessary, but we can have that permit regardless.
Let me say, what, what I hear is one permit for the person that's putting on, or the entity that's putting on the festival, so that people from out of town don't have to come in and get a permit because it's gonna be inconvenient for those vendors that are coming outside of Smith County to come and get a permit, one, one permit.
As long as he can guarantee the quality and that there are no stolen, I mean, you gotta guarantee for all of the vendors.
Well, I, and I have no problem with that, uh, I'm sorry.
That's right, I was gonna say the same thing. If we're holding Walton Days and the Chamber of Commerce is in charge of it, they, they apply for us to close the road, they apply for the peddler's permit, they covered the whole event. We don't have to have fifteen different people come in and fill out applications for permit fees.
That's inconvenient, it'll cut down on the vendors.
It's just, it's common sense, let's just use common sense. I mean, let's make it easier so we get more people wanting to come here and join our festivals, instead of making it harder so they don't wanna be here.
Okay, well, can I ask, can we, can we look at the fees that are being charged? 'Cause our fees for our festival, the park is only twenty dollars, what are your fees you're charging?
We, we charge forty dollars for a, uh, uh, just a regular booth, and we charge, uh, sixty or eighty for a food booth, depending on, uh, what they're doing. And what that money does is it puts the next event on, and it also pays for events that don't make any money, like Hometown Christmas, uh, Halloween. Uh, we put candy out there, we don't get any money for that. Walton Days fees pays for that candy.
But Sam was before, Ian was you.
It looks to me like that this doing away with the permit fee for now makes sense. If we start having the wrong people coming in, we start having problems, we can address that down the road.
I'll say this too, every, I mean, it could be the Chamber of Commerce, it could be another festival that comes in. It's probably pretty wise to let the people who are experts at these events handle the events. I'm not an expert. I don't know, any of us here, maybe some of us here are, I don't know. But we go ahead and give whatever the, if it's a large organization that's gonna have an umbrella of all people, we give them, they, they do their, they get their permit, and, I mean, it's, it's just gonna generate revenue for everybody, and then let them handle it. It's, I honestly don't think it's a council, something council needs to be involved in, or the city.
Let me just ask you then, if there's a liability for that event, will they handle it?
I would say, yeah.
If there's, if there's. So, yeah, so if it's.
Our insurance requires that.
It's like anything else, you can't guarantee anything's gonna get handled until it happens. It's the unknown.
Yeah, but I would say.
We, we, we have a li- umbrella liability policy that we have to get for events, it's through Valametis, and we list you guys as an additional insured.
So you still have that all on your same permit, insurance, everything's required, it's just for one entity and not each booth?
Yeah.
So.
I agree.
Any, any more questions or discussions? Y'all wanna just talk on yourselves now, thank you, Bill, I appreciate it.
I think, I think we got it pretty much settled, does everybody agree?
Motion that we.
Do we wanna add any of these, um, exceptions that Lebanon has on it?
Um, I mean.
Ours is pretty closely worded to that.
I think it is.
It's pretty close, yeah.
We just don't individually list the festivals and flea markets and stuff like that, but we're gonna do a blanket permit, I think that'll cover.
I think this just takes care of that twenty dollars, honestly. And we still, everything's the same way, we're still have to apply how we wanna apply. And we all understand that, if the Chamber of Commerce is applying to an event, they're gonna handle all vendors, it's, we're not gonna handle.
Yeah, it's one permit, it's done.
And I think that.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify that it's one overall umbrella permit.
Yeah.
So this is applied to, I mean, just ask you, so we're clear, is it any organization, whether we are familiar with that organization or not? Whatever.
Well, I mean, if we approved them to, to have a festival, I guess we've approved them, so to speak, to do their business.
Yeah.
We can't discriminate, I mean.
So when we get to this item on the regular agenda, whoever's gonna make the motion for, however we're gonna do the, uh, this over. Maybe our attorney might have that, but we'll, we'll handle that during the regular agenda.
I don't, and, uh.
There's only one, one item on here, that's, uh, the personnel policy, what we'd like to discuss.
Well, we made, we had a workshop, how long ago was that? Months?
Yeah.
And there was a bunch of changes made, and I was given a copy of the personnel policy, and some of those changes aren't in there.
Well, can we go through and?
Well, one of them is the hundred and twenty days cap on, uh, sick time. We, we, uh, agreed to change that to unlimited sick time. What I'd like to know also is, was the copy that was typed up during that meeting that was done with Attorney Moore of all the changes, 'cause we're taking it out.
That's what he sent us back.
Right.
This is what Attorney Moore sent us.
I, I don't know, all I can go by is what I was given.
And who did he send it back to?
He sent it back, well, he sent it to his boss, that copy.
Well, that's not, that's not the changes that we made, because we agreed that all employees should not be capped off on their sick time. It's capped at a hundred and twenty days, that's one thing. Law enforcement on their holiday pay is supposed to get paid eight and a half.
Were there minutes of this meeting, did we take notes?
It was a workshop.
No, minutes weren't taken at a workshop, I wasn't there.
And what was he, what was, there was an MPAS guy there, so what was his name?
Gary Jacob.
Mr. Grubbs.
Of Grubbs.
I think he was the one that did all the minutes, all the notes, and then he sent it to the attorney.
I thought it was, but.
Stuff too.
They're, they're interchangeable to me.
No, Mr. Grubbs took all the notes, and then he sent it to Mr. Moore to make sure legal language was okay.
Well, they were typing and changing while we were in the meeting.
That was him, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, and those changes, you know, it gets down to the actual personnel policy. That's like selling, they're allowed to sell two weeks vacation.
Um, do you, do you think, just make a, um, make a motion to change it? I'll fix it.
Why, why don't you just?
If you know, or is that, is that just one?
Well, could you make up the law enforcement, I, I was trying to write down everything.
Under the, under the holiday pay, each individual that's off on the holiday gets eight hours of pay. And if law enforcement has to work, we said they would get paid time and a half for that eight hours, plus the eight hours.
Well, that's it, that is in there. It's in that.
I looked at it, I didn't see it read that way.
Yeah, I think it's in that version. So if you just make a list of what.
Well, I, I shouldn't have to make a list, that's the point. Went through all this, and it didn't get transcribed, and it was handed out to the employees, not fixed the way we wanted it fixed. I wanna, I, my question to you is, where did it get messed up and how would we fix it?
I don't know, Mr. Grubbs made the notes, then he sent it to Mr. Moore, our attorney, to put it into whatever proper language, and then, then he sent that to me, then a copy to Danielle, so that.
I didn't get a copy from Mr. Moore.
Who got the copy from Mr. Moore?
I did, and that's the one that we shared, and sent out.
Was it an email form, or was, how was it?
No, it was in a long form, written out, it was written, it was what you had.
He just sent you a copy of the policy, he didn't send it through email?
It was through email. Was it not, did he not send it through email? I didn't get any hard copies, I knew that Mr. Grubbs had worked on one, and I didn't see that copy there.
So just, I mean, again, it was done through a workshop, it wasn't done through an ordinance change, so perhaps we need to do that, just.
No, perhaps we need to see without email, to find out where the mistakes at, because we sat down, we did it for two hours, and we redid the whole policy, and the changes aren't there.
Again, Mr. Grubbs is taking the notes, we didn't have a form, it wasn't a formal meeting, he's taking notes, he's sending it to his board.
And then it was sent to you, to your email.
So if, if there are things you, at this point, want to change there, and they just simply, just, just change them, it's that simple. We have to have two readings of the ordinance, that changes it. It's not a big thing, just put down what you feel is missing in there.
I, I guess I'm, I'm missing the point, it is kind of a big thing when we sat here as a council.
Spent two hours of our time.
And we made the changes, and they were not implemented.
Like many other things that have happened in the last three and a half years.
That's why I'm concerned with that.
Okay, well, again, it was a workshop, Mr. Grubbs is there helping us, it was not a formal meeting, but we need to do this, probably you're right, in a formal meeting. Just put it in the form which any of you want, we'll have two votes on it, it's done. I mean, it's pretty simple, if you'd like to do that.
I understand what you're saying, you know, you shouldn't have to go back and look at it, but you did. It's, it's, I mean, it had a whole.
Well, I agree, but the thing is, the reason we had the workshop, and so we all would agree on the changes, not just making changes to a personnel.
Just to make it so we do change it, I mean, I would just, I'd go through, look at the changes that you saw, 'cause I don't think I was at that workshop. We, we found the changes, saw, voted on it.
I don't think we have any other choice but to do that.
Yeah, 'cause apparently, uh, workshops.
A waste of time.
We're changing language on workshops now, so.
I think after we wrote that back, didn't we have a vote on this? We should have.
The original vote, I think, was in April when I wasn't here, and then I think it passed.
Because coming out of a workshop, it's not a formal ordinance change, you have to still vote on it during the meeting, so whatever.
But what, I think what they're saying is, they don't have, if it's not done, completed, they don't have what they worked on in the workshop to make that vote.
Okay, then I, I guess just simply take what we have here, make the changes, and then let's just vote on it twice.
Would you mind sharing that email that he sent, so that way?
I'll dig that through, but.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be great.
But I'm pretty sure that's what we sent to y'all, and we were gonna have a formal vote, let's go back and see if we had a formal revote on that thing.
I know it was formally voted on.
Okay, so you had a chance to look at it, when it was formally voted on, did you wanna make changes at that time? And you can come back and change it now, if you have no problem changing.
We're, we're, we'll get through it, uh, figure out the best way to handle this.
Well, again, if we had a formal vote, that was your chance to say, I wanna change this, this, and this, 'cause it just came out of a workshop, that's not a.
And I guess that's where the confusion is, 'cause we assume when we get out of a workshop that everything's gonna be documented the correct way. Maybe that's, I'll, I'll take blame for maybe not reading close enough to, that's probably.
Seriously, you need to read those things.
No, I, I understand, I, I'll take blame for it, because I have a big role in just not getting it done properly.
Well, but seriously, just go through, see what you wanna change, and the next meeting, we'll put that on the agenda, and we'll make any changes you want. and you will make any changes you want. It just takes two formal votes on it. Anything else pertaining to personnel policy that you... Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, need a special, all in favor?
Aye.